Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Tuesday, March the 19th, 2024, 4:00 P.M. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Moving to item three. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to add Certified Crime Prevention Communities Program Discussion to be added to the agenda as item six E.
Six E. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Tucker. I had an item. They get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, we're ready to vote. Motion carries. You announce. Six to zero, yes. All right, moving to item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman? He made the motion.
Okay. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, so moved.
All right, Mr. Ingram made the motion. Got second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries and annals. Moving to Hearing of the Citizens. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the county's web, Facebook, and the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors Business Meetings. Please remember that the board work sessions is designed for internal board and county staff communications, discussion, and work. It is not a question-and-answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outbursts of disorder conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and must be, may result in offending person removed from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties are designated by the board's bylaws or permitted to making comments on the Hearing of the Citizens section at tonight's business meeting. Moving to item five A. We have presentations, Old Callens Post Office Rehabilitation Project. We've got Mr. Dale Earn. Okay. Welcome, sir.
My name is Neil Martin. I'm vice president of the group that did the Old Callens Post Office Restoration. We have a picture up here. This is current as of about noon today, so.
Sir, I'm sorry. If I can get you, if you want to hold that mic, you're more than welcome to.
Well, if I get closer, is that better?
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. Next. This is just a signpost, I guess, a reminder of the importance of the buildings we're going to be talking about, the old clerk's office and the old courthouse slash jail that were, these were in existence before the Revolutionary War, so. We, our point of coming here today was to urge that these buildings be maintained properly. Next. Hey, that one doesn't show up at all. This is, well, I have two kind of sets of pictures, ones that were sent to me via text and some that I took myself. Unfortunately, this shows the interior of the old courthouse. It's some, I think this is on the second floor. You got some delamination, or I guess it's plaster coming apart there, so. That's just an example of one of the issues we noted. Next. Again, if you can blow this one up a little bit, there's a crack in the roof, I think, going up. This is on the second floor again in the old courthouse. Next. Yeah, this is the back porch going on the east side of the old courthouse. There are some steps going up, and as you can see, the hand railing and other parts, and I think we have another picture later that maybe shows us a little better, but there's definitely some work that needs to be done there. Next. Yeah, this is a little porch again on the east side of the old courthouse that was added, and it's hard to see it, but it's not in very good condition. Again, needs some maintenance work on it. Next picture. Yeah, this is the front porch of the old courthouse. Again, you can see some damage there, obviously, some painting needs to be done. I think we have some close-ups of that in a later picture. Next picture, please. This is the roof of the old courthouse, and you can see there that there's some shingles that are sticking up, and that's indicative of problems with the shingles starting to fail. Next picture, please. Well, actually, that's the same thing. We'll, next. See, this is on the north side, on the backside of the old courthouse. There's some rotten wood there. These are around the shutters that are covering the windows on the backside. Next picture, please. This is actually the clerk's office. This is, shows a couple of issues. One is the, obviously, the paint is getting in bad shape there, and then we got bushes that are much too close to the building. They need to be severely trimmed back. Next picture, please. And then, again, this is the old clerk's office. We have ivy growing up. That's encroaching on the mortar between the bricks, and, you know, over time, that'll cause a lot more problems, so that, again, needs to be addressed. Next. And this is a close-up of the columns on the front of the old courthouse. As you can see, it's rotted out there. Next picture, please. And this is, these are, both of these pictures are the two outer columns where they're, you know, affected most by the weather, and, again, that one's riding out as well. Next picture. And this is another picture of the porch on the east side of the old courthouse, and, again, you can see that the hand railings and some of the treads are getting in the point. They need some work done on them. Next picture, please. Now, this is the roof of the old courthouse. You know, it's not leaking now as far as we can tell, but the shingles are starting to lose their ability to turn water, and that's going to present problems certainly in very soon. Next picture, please. And this one shows a close-up of the roof line of the old courthouse, and you got some shingles there that are sticking up. Obviously, they're not supposed to be like that. Next, please. And that's just a better close-up. This is the chimney of the old courthouse, and, again, there are some shingles that are, have come loose there. It's a little hard to see. The picture is a little dark. Next, please. And this is on the northwest corner, I think, of the old courthouse, and the bricks, the mortars come out, and they're actually loose there. Josh Holder that was with me that day was, that's his foot poking the loose bricks there. Next, please. And this is the clerk's office. Again, it's a little hard to see here, but this, it's a maple tree. It's probably about 15 feet from the corner of the building. It's hard to tell from this picture, but the tree looks like it's rotting in the center, and that's gonna, if that falls, it's gonna be bad for the building, for sure. Next, please. And we're just comparing that to this picture that you have on your website of Yates Tavern. It looks like that's in a lot better shape than those two buildings, and the old courthouse or the old, and as well as the clerk's office are, we think, probably predate this because they were built, you know, prior to the Revolutionary War. So we're just urging that these maintenance issues be taken care of. That's what I had. Any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. It was very, very good. Two questions. Who owns the old courthouse?
What's that? The county.
Who owns the old courthouse?
The county.
Okay. Mr. Hunt? So we own, we own the courthouse itself. How much land around it?
I don't know that much. Well, there's two, two plots of land. There's, well, this is on Sago Road, about half a mile from the Callens Volunteer Fire Department. There's some land on the east side of Sago Road that has, where the old courthouse was, and then on the west side of Sago Road is where the clerk's office and the old post office, the one we renovated and moved out there.
Okay.
And any other questions?
Yes, one, one other question here. So this is a historical building. Is there an architectural review committee slash board that recommends how this is to be repaired, for instance, the windows, the doors, the porch, the roof, any of that? Is there an architectural review board or committee in place to oversee this, or can we just go to Lowe's and buy the pieces and parts and put them in there?
I, as far as I know, they're fine. Yes?
Sir, can you?
Yeah, come on.
Most of the time, whenever you do anything that's on the historical registry, which these buildings are, they're supposed to be done period correct. As you would see in Danville in multiple locations, the homes are chose, the colors, every material is done, so these homes would need, these structures would need to be done back historically correct. I mean, we all grew up there. Our families have been there. Our grandparents have been there. Y'all's ancestors may have been there at some point in time, but we want to make sure they're there for my children, my grandchildren. Once they're gone, they're never, they're never going to be back, and the skill to do that does not exist anymore.
Okay, and, and I agree with that. That's the reason I wanted to hear it. So who oversees this?
I, we, I don't know. Like, whenever, we do it in town, the company that I work for, the Historical Society in Danville oversees it, but I don't know the precedence here in the county.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Mr. Terrell, you will, you will be the belly button there for that one.
I've dealt with this before in Essex County with an old church and a steeple. It's Virginia Department of Historical Resources, DHR, I believe, that regulates the construction of historic buildings that are on the registry. He's correct. You cannot go to just Lowe's and, and construct it as you wish. You have to run it by the Historic Resources Department.
Okay, so I'm assuming that if this is approved, whenever it's approved, that Mr. Terrell would be the lead for this to make sure that it's a?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Ingram?
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And listen, thank you so much for your interest in preserving our history, and I commend you for that, and thank you for being here today. You know, I know that we're going through somewhat of a budget crisis, but I would surely be adamant in saying that whatever it takes to repair and fix up our historical building should be done forthwith, not wait until tomorrow. I remember back when we renovated the, the main courthouse up here, and I do recall that it had to meet certain standards as far as restoring it to its original design, and there was a lot that went into that. But I'm sort of ashamed to look at those slides and to realize that we own that building, and we've let it get as bad as it has, and we have a group of concerned citizens coming here saying, listen, you need to fix your own stuff, and so whatever we can do to do that, I'm surely in favor of that. But, again, I just commend you for your love for our history and for those facilities, and they're beautiful. And I guess another question I would have would be, if someone was interested in joining you guys as, as far as your committee to help out, how did they go about doing that? And you can address it an hour later. All right, Dale, come on. You knew that was for you, didn't you?
It's not an exclusive club. Anyone that wants to join can. We just ask for volunteers, and I think we've probably had over 100 different volunteers as we were doing the old post office because it was a total disaster, but we've had so many people help. Just when we have a workday or when we get together, we do have a meetings at the Callens Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department occasionally, and normally we'll put that on Facebook in some place or other, but anybody's welcome to come. It's actually, we have five board members, and of course, two of them are here and myself, but it's not exclusive. Anybody that's interested in history, we're not trying to compete with Pennsylvania County Historical Society, not in one bit, but we love to work with them, and they have been of help. I do appreciate that, especially Diane. She's not here today. And I meant to bring you a key to that building because we had to change the lock on the post office. Somebody broke in and stole our mail bags, and so I do need to get you a new key because they were old, and somebody knew the value, I guess, and stole them to resell, and so, yeah.
Okay, but thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let, let me express my gratitude to this particular group and great presentation for basically calling to our attention, you know, that historic piece. We understand that, you know, protocol has to be followed, it being a historic building. I think with Mr. Terrell taking the lead, you know, we probably need to kind of figure out, you know, best avenue to go here, and then on the money piece, by being the chairman of the Finance Committee, I can assure you that we will definitely take a look at, you know, granting, you know, you wish to refurbish, you know, these buildings and to preserve our history right here in the county. Also, I think there should be some grant money out there that should be available to us, and we'll try to, you know, chase that down to, to help out. I actually had the opportunity to visit the tavern over in Gretna this past year, and that was a very nice little event they had, and I'd like to see us, once we refurbish it, maybe put on some type of community event to get more people out and even young people interested in our history. So thank you so very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Anyone else? If not, I would like to comment on it because I can give you 30-plus years of history on those buildings because I was in building and ground maintenance superintendent since 1990. I worked on those buildings probably every year, very, very important buildings for our county. They represent all our history. It's always something to do on them. I understand that. Everything has to be done. Far as woodwork has to match what's on the building. I used to get Danville Lumber Company to mill it out, and then they went out of business. There's a gentleman by the name of John Bale over on West Over Drive. He has a woodworking shop. He can make the material. His people can make this material and match it. You have to match the profile of the molding and everything just like it's on the building, and that's what I've always done throughout the years. And I definitely support, I've already got word of these repairs, and I'd send it to our maintenance department to definitely get it on your list, on the top of the list, not on the bottom, but get it on the top of the list, and let's start working on these buildings because them cedar shakes blow off, the building rains down inside them, it's going to be a major, major repairs. I think 2019 or '20, I had a new roof put on Yates Tavern. On my CIP, I think I added in my last budget that we need to do this work at Callens, replace a roof on the clerk's office in the jail. I would love to have those pictures that y'all presented. I'd like to pass them on to our maintenance departments so they can see exactly, and they can make a site visit and start getting this work repaired. The mill work, you can't, like Mr. Bowman asked earlier, no, you can't go to Lowe's or Home Depot and pick this up. You have to get somebody to come out and measure and look and get the profile of it and get this lumber being made. It could take six, seven weeks to get some of this stuff made. So I want to make sure we get this on top of the list, and as Mr. Tucker mentioned, we'll look at our finances and whatever we need to do to make sure we can get these buildings fixed. I don't want to see them go down. Like I said, I worked on them. I want to see them in good shape, and I can see by the pictures, they have got in bad shape. And I want to thank y'all for coming out and presenting that to the board here so everybody here realizes what these buildings are worth, how valuable they are to the county. Again, thank y'all for coming. Any, any more questions, anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Very quickly, this is a question for Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt, what do we need to do to add this to our, our actual business meeting this evening to kind of get the ball rolling?
Well, that's more of a, you could add it. The question is, do you have the money? Where's the money coming from?
Do we, Ms. Vanderheide, question. Do we have historical line item? We used to have one. We still have it? Okay, which I know is, I don't know how much money is in there, but we used to always keep money in there. Yes. Okay. I mean, that would come on the building ground for pay. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Also, Ms. Vanderheide, not, not to kind of put you on the spot, but there are, I guess, funds out there for grants for historic buildings. Am I not correct? And we can actually kind of take a look at harvesting some of that. You know, I'd like to go ahead and add it to tonight's agenda so that we don't just procrastinate because, you know, the way things move now, you know, if you don't start on it immediately, you know, they kind of get lost in the shuffle, and before you look up, it'll be, you know, the fall of the year, that sort of thing. So I would like to add it to tonight's business meeting.
Yep, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any more discussion? Any more questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Again, thank y'all for coming out, presenting that, and if y'all give me those pictures, I'd like to pass them on to our maintenance department. Absolutely. Oh, you have them? Okay, well, good. Thank you. It's okay. Good deal. Maybe you can print those off Holly or send them to the main, okay. Thank you. All right, moving to item six A. Our County Tax Relief Program for the Elderly Disabled Veterans Review. We've got our Commissioner Revenue, Ms. Gold. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Diana had prepared a slide. I don't know. Is it on there? No, it's not.
I don't know. They may have it. Scott, y'all have the presentation for Ms. Gold? Okay.
No, sir.
Anyway, it was just a brief synopsis of what programs the county has, which is the tax relief for the elderly and disabled and also the veterans' tax relief. Currently, we have about a little over 300 people in the veterans program. We have 325 in the tax relief for the elderly and disabled. There are qualifications that has to be met in order to apply for the tax relief for the elderly. We do have an application that has to be filled out every year, and it's due in the office, Commissioner Revenue Office, by February the 15th. It is income-based, and currently, your income cannot be over $25,000, and the relief is applied to your primary residence and one acre of land. If you have someone living in the home with you that is a relative other than your spouse, you do have to include their income also, but you can exempt the first $4,000 of their income, and also if they're considered your bona fide caregiver, you do not have to consider their income. Now, the veterans, they can apply anytime during the year, so there is an application that they have to complete also, but there's no deadline on when theirs have to be filled out. So currently, you know, a veteran can come in anytime during the year, as long as he has his letter from the Veteran Administration that states he is totally and permanently, permanently disabled, then he can qualify for the tax relief, and he gets 100% of his home and up to one acre of land also. gets 100% of his home and up to one acre of land also. The exemption does not apply to personal property, so they don't get it on a vehicle. But the veterans, they are exempt from one vehicle, but that's state mandated. It's not anything that the county can do about that. But if you're elderly and disabled, you cannot get it on your personal property tax. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gore. Any questions for Ms. Gore?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Gore, thank you for being here tonight. And I know it's important that a lot of seniors on fixed incomes basically get this information, and also veterans that are disabled to help defray the burden of tax. You had mentioned the veterans. Now, I know there should be a caveat because you have a lot of veterans in the county. Are they eligible at 100% only, or are there different levels? Because you have people that have disabilities that are drawing 40%, 60%, 80%, that sort of thing.
Right. Excuse me. It used to have to say they had to be 100% totally and permanently disabled, but they did away with the percentage because, like you said, a lot of veterans are rated at different percentages. So, now they just have to be totally and permanently disabled, and it has to be a service-connected disability. And they earn that certification through the Veterans, Department of Veterans Affairs. We have nothing to do with that. They have to rate them and give them a letter that they pass on to us along with their application that states, you know, their disability, or that they are totally and permanently disabled.
Okay.
And they do, as I said, qualify for 100% tax relief. Now, elderly or regular disabled person, their percentages range from 20% to 100%. It's based on their income, where the income falls, as to how much they get.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So, that is the difference in the two programs.
Okay. Any more questions? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Gore, thank you for coming today.
You're welcome.
So, a couple of questions here. The vets, I just, for clarity here, now, the vets, you say get 100% dis, if they're 100% disabled, they get 100% of their tax?
Well, they don't have to be 100%. They just have to be totally and permanently disabled.
Okay.
The percentage doesn't matter. They can be 40%, 20%, as long as they are totally and permanently disabled, they can qualify for tax relief.
Okay. So, how much tax relief?
They get 100%.
So, it doesn't ma-
On their home, it has to be on their primary residence and up to one acre of land. So, if he has two acres, he's going to pay on that second acre.
Okay. But it doesn't matter how much income they make?
No, sir.
So, unlike somebody that's widowed, living at home on a fixed income, they are categorized as to how much they make?
Yes.
Twenty-some thousand dollars, right?
Twenty-five thousand, right now.
Okay. All right. So, I got that. All right. When was the last time this was actually looked at and updated? And how much latitude does the local government have in updating this?
The last time the income was raised was, let's see, I looked this up, but I can't remember off the top of my head. It was when the last commissioner was here. So, I want to say it was in 2018, the last time that it was changed, the income. And certainly, the board has the option to change that.
The board being this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, 2018 was the last time, which is, what, six years ago then?
Yes.
Is there a requirement as to how often it's to be reviewed and updated?
No, there's no requirements, no.
Okay. Then, all right, I would like to, I'd like to look at that also to see if that's something that we can look at and see if we can update that.
Okay.
Did somebody say something? Okay. Again, where can this be found for the citizens? Where can they go to to find this information?
It's on the county website, under the Commissioner Revenue page. There's the application for the tax relief for the elderly and disabled, and also the one for the veterans.
Okay. And there is a timeline that it has to be filed by?
For the elderly and disabled, it has to be filed by February the 15th.
So, that's already come and gone?
Yes.
Without them knowing what the tax rate is?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then, as I said, for the veterans, there is no timeline. They can apply.
Yeah. I'm not as concerned about the vets.
Right.
We kind of take care of ourselves. But the elderly and disabled, not so much. So...
True. That's true.
I want to, I want to try to pull the pieces together. I'm trying to figure this thing out. Okay. So, February the 15th?
Yes.
So, after the tax rate is passed, let's say it's past April the 4th, then they'll have to wait an entire year. But they're going to get billed in July?
They will be billed before that. They'll be billed in May. And it's, the first half is due by June the 10th.
Okay.
And like you said, it will be after the tax rate is set.
Okay. All right. Good. Good. Well, I mean, it's not good for them, but that's good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ingram, any other questions, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really like the fact that the veterans can apply at any time, but why would we put a date on the elderly?
Well, we have to have time to process the applications that come into the office because, like I said, for the tax relief for the elderly and disabled, they do have to qualify or apply every year because it's income-based.
Okay.
So, when the program was set up, you know, and we were on the twice-a-year bill, and they just had to set a deadline date for those applications to be in, so we'd have time to work them. And, you know, if the person qualified to get the deduction off of the taxes.
One of my other jobs, I work with a lot of veterans, and it's really sad to know the number of our veterans within our community that have disabilities. And I would suggest many don't even know about this. So, maybe we need to do a better job promoting it, but thank you so much.
Well, generally, the Department of Veteran Affairs, if they have a relationship with them, they generally would let them know, you know, when they're eligible and can apply. And then they come in, because they have to, like I said, have a letter from them stating that they are totally and permanently disabled.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any more questions? Mr. Dudley?
Yes. Thank you, Rob, for coming today. I appreciate it a lot. And I know we're speaking of Pennsylvania County, but is this also relief in other counties?
Yes.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would they vary of how the relief is per county or something like that?
Yes. Different counties have, their income amount is different.
Okay.
Because Northern Virginia, of course, the income amount is higher.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. Tax relief for the elderly. I think that's all. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any more questions?
May I make a comment?
I got a couple, Ms. Gore.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I'm going to agree with Mr. Bowman. We need to look at possibly raising this income because I would say it's more than 325 people making less than, or 25,000. I got a whole lot of people in my family that don't make that much. So, I'd say it's a lot of people out there struggling. And did you know the number in '18? Was it 18 or 20,000? You remember what it was in '18?
It was 18,000.
So, it was raised from 18 to 25, six years ago.
Yes.
It's something that the board here probably needs to look at and maybe raise that number to help more citizens.
And prior to that, it was 12,000, the income.
Wow. Okay. Yeah. That's good information. Thank you. Yes, that's all I've got. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr.-
Any more questions?
I think Mr. Terrell had something.
Mr. Terrell? Sorry. Go ahead.
Just a comment. Ms. Gore and I have actually worked with folks who called us on individuals and helped them get the relief, both veterans and elderly and disabled. So, the system is working, but it does need periodic review, particularly in a high inflationary environment as we're in now. So, the thresholds are adjusting. But it is working because we've worked on at least two cases together.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One-
Yes, sir.
One final comment or maybe suggestion or question. Ms. Gore, is it possible to put this information on the, like, homepage of the county's webpage or whatever, rather than under Commissioner Revenue? Because in a lot of instances, seniors and veterans are not going to click and drill quite that deep. So, we kind of need that information kind of out there, especially for those persons that are going to need the assistance. Is that something we can do?
I think it could be done. I'm sure I will check with, yeah, she's shaking her head saying yes. So...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We'll get that done, put it on the homepage.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. That's a good idea. And possibly, it might be something we could run in a local paper a couple of months before the deadline, give people time to come in and do this. Because a lot of elderly people don't even know what a computer looks like, but they do pick up that chat on paper. So, we give them a 60, 90-day notice, you know, this available deadline, February 15th. So, just a suggestion.
She had her hand.
Do you have a question?
Okay. I was going to say, you have Bobby sitting here in the back, so we- Yeah. That's right.
There you go. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. All right. Any more questions, Ms. Gore? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving to Item 6B. We've got the Potential Beautification Committee. It's going to be Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And board members, this, some of you may remember this, the Beautification Committee was established a few years ago, and then it was done away with, I don't know for what reason, whether it was lack of participation or emphasis or whatever. But anyway, it's a, there's a number of discussion points that have come up recently about the litter and trash throughout the county, how we can actually police ourselves. We've talked about how the sheriff provides folks to work with us, talk about hiring folks to go out there on contract, to go out and police the roads and around the areas out there throughout the county. And so, what I'm proposing here is to reestablish the Beautification Committee. And I'll give you some talking points from that, and be glad to try to answer any questions that you may have. So, what this does, number one, is provide a way for more citizens to become involved and serve in the county, being able to interact with other folks out there, neighbors and the such, and going out and doing this as group effort. So, it's not just somebody individually going out there and policing up roads and highways. It's to enhance the aesthetic appeal and overall beauty of our county through collaborative efforts, innovative projects, and sustainable practices, fostering a sense of pride and belonging among our residents. This committee would be created of seven citizens, one from each Magisterial District. The committee would define its purposes, which could include organizing annual or semi-annual county-wide cleanups, encouraging businesses and individuals to adopt a highway, adopt landscaping areas around businesses and roadways, work with civic groups and towns on beautification projects, and apply for grants for fund for projects. A point of member of the Board of Supervisors to serve as a liaison between the committee and the Board of Supervisors, and they will give regular updated reports to the Board of Supervisors, and work with the county administrator and public works on acquiring, MVOT, acquiring different bags and paraphernalia, whether it's, you know, the vest and things like that in order to do their cleanups. The Beautification Committee would establish their own structure, such as they will have their own chairman, they will set their own meeting schedules. The meetings would be open to the public and follow all county protocols. All supervisors would make their appointments for approval not later than the Board of Supervisor meeting of April the 16th. And the reason for that is because the county is going to launch an announcement of the Beautification Committee at the countywide cleanup ceremony to be held on Saturday, April the 27th. To this point, I've already gone out and gotten my representative for Chalblair's District, and that is Ms. Wendy Haymore Shields down at Haymore's Nursery. She's already stepped up and said that she would be glad to participate in this committee. So, with that being said, if there are any questions, I'll certainly be glad to entertain those. And I would also ask that this be placed on the agenda under New Business for a vote this evening. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? I would make a comment, Mr. Bowman.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, thinking about the trash, just the other day, I was noticing one of our county welcome signs. I mean, it needs some TLC. You've got a beautification committee could look after those, keep a welcome sign looking good, keep the trash up. And I know you're familiar with it. You've got a lot of history on it, or very familiar with it. I mean, I'd recommend going and make you the contact person, make you chairman of the committee if needed to be.
Second.
I recommend all of that.
I don't want to be chairman of the committee. This takes away from them, but I'll be the board liaison if you would like.
That'd be great.
How about that?
That'd be great. I recommend that.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Any more comments?
I'm good.
Mr. Ingram? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll yield to Mr. Height.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Height.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Yeah.
I would love to see one thing come out of this committee is educating our young kids in the school system. Most of you up here remember Smokey the Bear coming to your schools, and they talked about litter control. You know, we need to teach our children while they're small, you know? So, programs like that, to me, are beneficial still, you know? I saw Smokey down on the Outer Banks the other day in the field. There was a statue. I was like, wow, at least they still promote Smokey out here.
There you go.
So, you know, we need to be sure we're educating our children about the importance of keeping our communities looking nice.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Height. Mr. Ingram?
Mr. Bowman, I commend you for that. That's a great idea. I don't have a representative yet, but I can recommend a good one for the Westover District, retired teacher Catherine Blair. She goes out on her own up and down the Morpheer Bridge Road and picks up trash. But she lets me know how disgusted she is with litters. But no, that's a great idea, and I would support you 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any more questions for Mr. Bowman? Comments? We just need to make a recommendation added to the business meeting. Mr. Hunt?
Yes. We'll add this to Matters from Work session along with the historical building funding issue. So, we'll put that on tonight's business meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any more, anything else, Mr. Bowman? You good?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving to Item 6C. We've got the VDOT Smart Scale County Projects Update. This is Ms. Ragsdale. Welcome.
Good afternoon. You all may remember Carson Eckhart from VDOT and Jay Craddock giving you a presentation at a previous work session about Smart Scale.
Yes, ma'am.
So, since then, we've had conversations. We've had conversations with them about potential projects for the county for this round of funding, and then thinking about the next round of funding, which will occur begin in 2026, and what that looks like. So, we wanted to come back to the board and kind of give you all an update. So, as you can see, and it's a little difficult to read on your screen, so I'll go through it with you, this is kind of how the Smart Scale process works. So, you can see that it's a two-year funding cycle, and that's why we submit applications every two years. We are currently in the pre-application portion of the program that runs from March 1st to April 1st. So, any project that we want to receive funding for or submit for funding in this round, we have to submit a pre-application into the system before April 1st. Once that's submitted, it goes through various pre-screening, readiness hurdles through VDOT. VDOT, you know, scrutinizes the project, and once they decide that it is ready for full application, they give us the go-ahead. We can submit the full application starting in June. Those all have to be in by August 1st. So, once those applications- So once those applications are in to the system by August 1st, then they start going through the screening process for funding. And you can see that goes from August to December. December, they have finished scoring those projects against their standards that are set by the Transportation Board as part of this process, and then they move into funding. So we don't find out what projects are funded until June of 2025. That's really when we know what we've submitted this year has actually been funded by the state. And then the end of the funding round, they go back and look at the process and how things work, and what changes they want to make moving into the application round starting in 2026. So I just wanted to kind of give you all an update to let you know exactly how the process will work. So for this round, when I discussed it with VDOT about possible applications for this round, there were really only two that were ready to be submitted at this point, and that is the Berry Hill Interchange, which will connect to the 311 Connector Road. The MPO, which is West Piedmont Planning District Commission, will actually be submitting that application, they are the ones that submitted the application for the 311 Connector Road previously. And then the 41 Franklin Turnpike Study that is being kind of wrapped up now, that's in the public input phase of the process, and there will be a public meeting on March 25th at 5:30 at the Mount Herman Volunteer Fire Department for the public to come and really see the presentation and what is being proposed. But we are pulling projects out of that study to submit for funding. So those are really the only two, the Franklin Turnpike may be submitted as one large project, it may be broken down into multiple smaller projects, that hasn't fully been flushed out yet, but those are really the only two projects that VDOT feels are ready to be submitted this round. Now with that said, the 2026-2027 submission process, so we need to go ahead and start thinking about projects that we want to submit for consideration for that round, and I know it seems really early, but prior to submitting pre-applications, we have to ensure that a study has been done in that area, we have to work with VDOT to have sketches of any improvements done, good cost estimates done, timelines for construction done, it's not something that can just be pulled out of the air. So we have to make sure that we give VDOT enough time to work with us, to make sure that we have all those things in place, so that when preapplications open, we're ready to submit those projects. So if you all will start thinking about things now that we want VDOT to vet, as long as I have those, you know, between now and the end of the year, we'll start working with VDOT to make sure that as soon as that pre-application opens in March of 2026, we are ready to submit projects. We've already discussed the intersection of Dry Fork Road and 29 with VDOT, so that's on our list of things. So, you know, we've discussed intersections like the intersection of 863 and Mount Cross Road, the intersection of 863 and Franklin Turnpike, because that was not included in the 41 study. So, you know, if there are areas like that in your district, now they have to be, you know, major roads, what VDOT considers as a major road, so, you know, they're not backroads and things like that, they're probably not going to really consider for Smart Scale. But anything along 29, anything along 58, 41, Mount Cross Road, things like that, 57, those would probably be great projects, you know, and it can be something, two of the, one of the projects that was funded last year were just intersection warning signals at Cascade Road. So, you know, it can be something, what we consider as minor as that, or larger projects, and we would work with VDOT to determine kind of what that scale would look like. So if you all would just kind of start thinking about that now, submit any of those requests to me. A lot of times, if you send them to VDOT, they do not make their way back to staff, or they do not get escalated to the proper people at VDOT. And so, you know, if you can send them to me, I will make sure that I work with the engineers at VDOT to make sure that we do get those projects to the right people, they're properly vetted by VDOT, and that we have all the documentation that we need to make sure that we get them submitted in the next round. Do y'all have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily? Thank you, great presentation, and just for the board's information, FYI, Emily and I and Jay Craddock met about three weeks ago over at the VDOT location, talked about the Route 41 Franklin Turnpike improvement there. For the public, please come out, March 25th, 5:30 right at Mount Herman Fire, they will be there, VDOT will be there to go over the different options of what they're proposing for the Route 41 Franklin Turnpike area there. And that piece of road is going to start right there where the road turns into Fourlands from Two, coming up from Twin Springs School, and it'll end at Meadows, right there at the orphanage. And so that entire stretch of highway there is under a review right now, and it's going to be significant, it could have anything impact, such as the right turns, left turns, there's even a proposal for a roundabout somewhere along that stretch of road. So for anybody that's interested, especially if you've got a business on that road, you have land on that road that you might want to be marketing for sale, then you probably need to be at that meeting to take a look at what the proposals are along that road, because that's some of the things that VDOT is currently working on right now. So thank you for attending that meeting with Jay and myself to talk about the Route 41. So the only question I've got, and I know you just mentioned a little bit there about the secondary roads, the shoulder improvement process along some of these roads, I know they did it at Dry Fork Road because of a lot of the, especially with the landfill there, and the vehicles that travel that road, they actually widened each side of the road about two feet. Is there any possibility we could do something like that, or how does that particular process work? Because I know Pleasant Gap Road, a lot of these secondary roads need something like that, that shoulder widening.
I don't know, and it kind of depends on what the scoring standards for the round are set as, and that changes from year to year. So that improvement was one of the really early Smart Scale programs or projects, from what I understand. I think the scoring requirements have changed since then, so they like to see more, you know, economic development benefits, roads of higher significance, you know, improvements and things like that. I don't know that it would not qualify, it's something that I'll be happy to take to VDOT and kind of let them evaluate, and they may come back and say, yeah, we think that it'll score high based on X, Y, and Z, they may come back and say, no, this is not a project we want to move forward with. And they are kind of picky about what projects move forward, because we only get, I think it's four applications per round. So they want to make sure that we're submitting applications that have an opportunity to score really well, so that we have a higher possibility of having them funded. But I'll be happy, any ideas that you all have, I'll be happy to vet them with VDOT, and, you know, it may come back and be great, it may not, that's just something that we'll have to see.
Good, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any more questions, comments from Ms. Ragsdale, Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me address Dry Fork Road, part of it, one side's in my district, one's in Mr. Bowman's, and of course, the citizens have asked to widen the shoulders, and I think VDOT has done what they can, but the main problem there is the volume of trash trucks coming through there, the private trash trucks, so I do think we need to talk about and address that. There's a reoccurring issue with Mount Cross Road and Stony Mill Road, right there, it's now Mills Grocery, used to be Austin Brothers. And I've talked with Jay a couple of times over the past four, well, more than a couple of times over the past four years, and it's almost like with each year, with a new set of parents and new set of concerns, you have different comments and questions about the intersection. So my question is, I know VDOT's done at least two studies there, and would we need to resubmit a third, or can we lean on what's already been done?
So that's a question for VDOT. I think it depends on how recent the study is and what information was gathered in that study. If it's a more recent study that was done, they can probably use that study and just expand upon the information of the data that was collected at the time. That's what they've done for a couple other projects that we had. I do think that that at one point was submitted for maybe a Smart Scale project, and then I'm not exactly sure, you know, what happened, but I think they came back and decided not to fund it at the last minute. So, you know, it may be a good opportunity to reevaluate that and kind of see, has anything changed in the area, are there new requirements that may help it score better than it did back then? So I would definitely put that on the list, and I'll get with VDOT about that.
One of the possible solutions was the infamous roundabout, and you know, some people get in that and they can't get out. So I think the last time this was brought up, that it was more support than it was in prior years, but we'll talk about that, okay? Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Any more questions, anybody? Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Ms. Emily.
All right, we're gonna move to item 6D, Towns and County Economic Development Summit. Mr. Terrell?
All righty, good to see everybody on this beautiful spring day, a lot of things are happening. So what I want to talk about is a county economic summit proposal. After attending the recent Chatham First Meeting, meeting with the IDA, I've met with a number of area business leaders now, and the mayors of Chatham and Hurt, the Chamber of Commerce, attended a number of sessions, I met with at least three CEOs, with Mr. Rowe of area businesses. It's now clear to me that there are actually numerous individuals, organizations, and entities in this county working on individual economic development projects that they're taking on their own, okay? Re-envisioned Chatham, spoke to the mayor of Chatham, they're undertaking that with a grant, all within the county. So what I'm proposing, with all these separate entities working on economic development, why don't we have a summit? Why don't we all get together, talk about all the various projects, the grants, talk about workforce development? Let's start working collaboratively as a county, not individually. There's, you know, met with Mayor of Hurt, he's got some ideas. I just think we have enough commonality of interest here, there's grants out there, if we collaborate and talk about pooling our resources, we can achieve so much more. So what I'm proposing is that we have an economic summit, I'm thinking quarterly, but that may be too often, we'll talk about it, but just have the first one, get organized, perhaps semi-annually or quarterly, and just talk about all our projects, and see if we can't help each other and support each other, we all have the same interests, we all have the same goals, the strategies may vary slightly, but we all want to promote the community and the economy, and bring wealth and jobs into the community. That's what Mr. Rowe works 24/7, we think about that constantly, how to bring more wealth and opportunity into this community, how to do more in community development with things like parks and recreation, which we talked about in the budget, and work collaboratively on these ideas. We can achieve so much more with that dynamic and synergy. So there it is. I'd like to put that out to you. Also, I've met with the IDA regularly, and they do request a joint meeting with the board, perhaps in the spring or early summer, if you guys can give me a date, I'll work with that. But majority of what I'm proposing to you is an economic summit, where we get around the table and just share ideas about what we're doing, so we're not working, one hand doesn't know what the other's doing, we're not working in the dark, we're working in the light of collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Any questions for Mr. Terrell? Please. Yes, sir, Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, Mr. Terrell, thank you for that presentation, and the question I've got is, where is the economic developer? Where's the director that, why isn't he leading this charge here? Why aren't we having roundtable meetings with these folks already? And I think it's a great idea, I think having a joint meeting with the IDA is a great, IDA is a great idea, we need to share some information back and forth, but I think that is a job for the Economic Development Director to set up these kind of meetings and find out what's going on, and then let the Board of Supervisors attend as they can to hear what's being talked about. Just my one opinion here.
Understood, and the reasoning behind this proposal is that we all working in our own strategies and goals, our economic developers working under my direction, I work for you y'all, and the board has directed certain approaches to economic development, and I'll be upfront, we've been focusing more on the mega site and some of the industrial parks. So we've been working on our own track, and what I'm proposing is, this is bigger than our economic developer, we need to get all of our economic developers together and then share ideas. My job is to look at the biggest, broadest picture, and then I direct our economic developer, based on what I'm hearing from y'all, on his track, but I want all of our tracks to be laid out, and that's why I'm proposing to lead it.
Well, I understand where you're coming from, but we have an Economic Development Director who can be doing that, his sole job is not the mega site, and if it is, then we're paying, you know, too much money for that. I'm just telling you straight up, we need to have the Economic Development Director plugged into each one of these towns, they need to be talking to each other about what collaboratively we can do as a group, if you're going to do this. So whether he works for you, or he works for us, or you work for us, is immaterial, it's the duty, it's the job description of that particular person that's in that job.
I certainly understand that, but I would like us all to sit around the table, and the only way to, this is about communication, the only way to learn what other leaders are doing is to sit in the table, I will certainly coordinate that with our developer, but the only way to understand what they're doing is to actually talk, not just send emails and communicate ad hoc. We need to just sit down and lay some cards on the table and talk about what we're doing collaboratively, and to do that broadly, I understand where that could go, but I would like to have a hand in that first meeting at least, and then we could go from there.
Mr. Terrell? Mr. Chairman, brother.
Yes, Mr. Ingram?
I'm sorry, did I interrupt someone?
Yeah, go ahead. No, no. Mr. Ingram, I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Ingram first. Go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
I've got to take this opportunity and go to bat for our Economic Development Director, because I think he does a fabulous job, and he's certainly going to go to where the more specific urgent need is. And I hear comments about the mega park, and even before I came on the board, there was some derogatory things said, but, you know, we've made a whole lot of progress, and when you look at the magnitude of the mega park in comparison to the Brazel Industrial Park, it's not a comparison, it's an apple and an orange. And I see Matt not only working on that, but working with the IDAs, he's coming out at night at those meetings, I know he's working in the northern part of the county, he's been very instrumental in growth there. So I personally think he's doing a great job, and this is probably more so your brainchild than it is his, correct?
Correct.
All right, sure. And that's notable, because we, you know, sometimes we tend to overmeet, but again, I've got to... I've got to go to bat for Mr. Rowe because some of the things that he's done and some of the things he's proposing is nothing short of phenomenal. And I think the relationship, the correlation that he has, not only with the city of Danville, but with the state and other entities, including the IDA, is exactly what we need. And so, you know, your proposal surely has some merit, but I would suggest that he's probably done a lot of that behind the scenes that we're not aware of because he's a man of few words, but when he speaks, we need to listen to him. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I concur with that. Mr. Rowe is doing an excellent job and things are happening. I'm just suggesting that there's so many players now in this community that one person alone is difficult to stay on top of it all. That's why I think I need to step in and offer some leadership on this and offer a bigger picture approach. I just think it's more than any one person at this stage can manage.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Terrell, thank you. I think, well, first off, let me agree with Mr. Ingram and also you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Rowe is doing a wonderful job and he really is working hard behind the scenes. And when you don't see him, he is actually busy working. But I think you are visionary, Mr. Terrell, and I think that what you're proposing has merit because too often people are working in silos. So I, you know, I'm, you know, obviously, a lot of my constituency is on the northern end of the county, so is Mr. Dalton, my colleague, and also Mr. Dudley. And sometimes we kind of feel like most of the economic activity is on the southern end of the county and, you know, we have to take a look at, you know, Gretna, Hurt, you know, Motley, these areas, you know, they need a bit refurbishing and, you know, there needs to be some attention given to them. So, you know, when, as you say, we collaborate, you know, the mayor of Hurt, the mayor of Gretna, along with the mayor of Chatham, and everyone comes to the table and everyone brings new ideas and, you know, we're not looking to duplicate what Mr. Rowe is doing. I don't believe that's what you're proposing. What you're proposing is that, you know, the visionary leaders of the county come together and we try to work collaboratively to figure out if we can't kind of join forces there and, you know, lend a hand where we can to, you know, elevate the entire county. I believe that's what you're proposing.
Correct.
So I think it has merit, sir. So I'd be interested to hear the input from, you know, these other leaders like the mayor of Gretna, Chatham, Hurt, that sort of thing. Let's see what we can do to kind of get together.
That's me, right? Okay.
You got anything, Mr. Dudley?
No, sir, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
I do want to add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
And do realize a lot of what's being discussed behind the scenes is extremely confidential.
Correct.
Extremely. And so it would not be wise to take a project to a table and include people that don't need to know, so.
Understood. We won't talk about specific projects, but just overall goals, vision, strategies. I think it's worth setting up and see where we go with it. Is that good? We all right with that? Yes?
Just let me clarify if you will.
Yes, sir.
I'm not saying that Matt Rowe is not doing a good job. That's not what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm saying that having these roundtable discussions with these folks right here, that's part of the job description. Now, if you're going to take on that responsibility, great, go for it, you know, because I'll be right there. I want to hear what they've got to say also. But he is the expert in economic development and he's doing a great job. He's out there recruiting, he's knocking on doors, he's, you know, he's doing 24/7 work. But when you were looking at the county here, I think that's part of the job also. So if you're going to take on that lead, you know, go for it. I'm there, but I want to, I'll be there too. I want to see, you know, the input. I want to hear what these folks are talking about, what they need and how we can share and work with them.
Absolutely. Taking on historic buildings now, so I'll take this one on too. And this is something that Matt and I talk about constantly and we'll work hand in hand on this. I just feel it's something that needs my backing and support because it's so broad-based and I'm talking to these folks regularly as well from my level. I just think it requires my input as well, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me kind of echo what my colleague, Mr. Ingram, stated. You know, obviously, there are some things, because we sound a non-disclosure, that, you know, we can't talk about at this particular roundtable. You know, I want to make this expressly clear. Mr. Rowe is working on things, I think, that, you know, with the Berryhill mega site, which should take precedence over the roundtable, okay? I'm just saying that because right now with the mega site where we are and, you know, with the investment that we have as a county along with the city of Danville, we need the majority of his focus on that to make sure that that is successful, it comes to fruition. And for those that feel like, well, yeah, that's a lot of money out there, I mean, I understand it, I get it, but when we compare that to the Research Triangle down in Raleigh, North Carolina, it actually took them about 25 years before they actually became viable. So, you know, we just need to be a little patient and, you know, allow the Matt Rose of the world and the Corey Boobays of the world do what they're trained to do. And I think at the end of the day, we will all be satisfied. But what Mr. Terrell is proposing is something in and of itself entirely different, yet it involves, you know, the economics of the county and the development of the county. But I think part of what we want to do is look at these small towns that are waning and struggling economically and they are trying to brainstorm in terms of how to revamp or refurbish Main Street on some of these, in some of these little smaller towns. And I think that's the focus of what Mr. Terrell, and I'm not carrying your water, sir, and I'm not trying to speak for you, but I mean, I'm able to see kind of where you're headed there, so.
Well, that's it. And the other thing, we have such a large county. I think what happens is we get in our own space because we're so large, just geographically. The point of that is we can pull everybody together and close that space and say, we're all part of one community, even though we're spread apart geographically. So that's my proposal. Have some lunch or dinner and just sit around and talk about what's going on, how we can make this a better place, bring more wealth into the community.
Mr. Ingram, he has no comment.
Yeah, I think between me and Mr. Dalton, we have more tenure than most people in this room, but, you know, I remember when Berryhill Road was just Berryhill Road. And so looking at where it's at today, over 10 years, over $210 million investment, you know, that's a given. But one thing that I did want to reiterate is that prior boards looked disparagingly upon the northern end of the county, that they were focused about, you know, what was more advantageous around the city of Danville. And I'm glad we've outgrown that because it's just as important that we look at what we can do for Hurt and Gretna and Chatham as we can for Berryhill, but looking at the size of the project. So, you know, I was thinking about a conversation I had with Mr. Whittle and he made a lot of sense when he said that we need to focus on mom and pop entities or stores or retail facilities. So, you know, maybe you could refocus your attention toward some kind of association with the towns and see what can be done on a smaller level that would be very beneficial. How can the county help Hurt or Gretna or Chatham? And so that's just a suggestion, but, and that really came from Mr. Whittle, so I thank him for that.
Well said, because that is part of the reasoning behind this, is there's a whole niche of economic development that we need, where we need to focus. It's the small retailer, the mom and pop, the small-scale business owner. We have some here and that whole segment, I think, needs more focus. Exactly. That's exactly, Mr. Whittle, we've talked about this. We need more focus now on that niche of economic development, the small town, the small business owner, the mom and pop, the entrepreneur, and that's what the IDA, by the way, is designed to encourage. So what do we need? Revolving loans, grants? What are the ideas? This is more of an idea summit. How do we promote that segment of the economy, not just the large manufacturing? I did take that insight from Mr. Whittle, Supervisor Whittle. Correct?
We'll put Mr. Whittle in charge of this committee if you didn't mind, if that's all right with you. Man of many words.
Yes, sir.
All right. So everybody good with that idea?
Yep. Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, we're moving to item 6E. We have a presentation by Sheriff, Mr. Mike Taylor, going to talk about the certification for the crime prevention community program. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me the time. And I have some information here I give to Caitlin.
This is an opportunity that came to the office through the Department of Criminal Justice Services. And in our budget meeting, I spoke to Mr. Tucker and Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir.
About the possibility about speaking to this, just a little bit of its history. Back in 1993, the Virginia State Crime Commission got together and they were looking for ways to make communities safer. And from that, in 1998, an executive order was then issued and was created called the New Partnership Commission for Community Safety. So one of those initiatives that came from this commission is the Certified Crime Prevention Community Program. And it is designed for localities that wish to participate, to work at several different goals to make your community safer through law enforcement. And in one of those covenants, it, one of the requirements is that the board, the local board, would agree to partner with law enforcement in this program. So some of the benefits that they talk about, and there are many, there are many goals and you'll see in your packet, it gives some examples of some of the things a community can do, of which we already do some of these initiatives and have been for years. And we do have a certified SEP Ted officer, and a SEP Ted is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And we have an officer that's certified in that. And what that officer can do is to go to businesses, go to schools, go to buildings, go to factories, and with the partnership of those businesses can look to see where they could mitigate risk of injuries, crime in the parking lots and those type of things. If a, and there are very few certified communities in the state of Virginia that it sort of shocked me when I was looking at the list, there are very few localities, cities and counties that have this designation. And this is not something you need to act on tonight, of course, but I just wanted to make you aware of the opportunity and again, the partnership between the board and the sheriff's office. And here are some of the benefits. If we have a certified community through crime prevention, it may attract other businesses. It allows that businesses, those businesses to apply for and maybe get a reduced rate in their insurance premiums. It enhances the security in and around your company and it shows, it shows at least the state of Virginia that that community is really tied in to making it, their community, a safer place to raise your families, to promote businesses, and just an overall grant opportunity for other grants that may come available to us that require you to be a certified community in crime prevention. So, and in the back of the, in the back of your package, you'll see a, an agreement, a partnership resolution that is required when we make our application. And it's a very lengthy application, by the way, and our folks got to this point and they said, well, it's no further, we can't go any further until the board takes a look at this and to see if they may hold an interest. We're certainly interested at the sheriff's office if we can do that. I've been listening to the discussions here tonight about businesses and meeting with the local leaders and the economic summit. And so I think they would have interest in this as well to make their community safer.
That's right.
So I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. And again, this is just for information and you all can decide what, how you want to proceed with that.
I've got a question, Mr. Taylor. Is this, is this a separate program or is this just kind of a certification for all the other programs? Like, do you still have your DARE program and stuff like that?
Yes, we do.
So does that certify all these programs or is this a separate program? I'm just trying to.
It's a separate program.
Okay.
But under that umbrella, it talks about, do you have a Crime Stoppers Board in your community? Do you have a DARE program? Do you subscribe to the other programs within the state as far as initiatives to have a safer community? And there's a long grocery list in there of those things that, but to answer your question, it is a program in and of itself and a certification in and of itself.
That's good. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Sheriff Taylor, thank you for being here tonight and, you know, even when you laid it out when we met, I really was impressed with the program and your office and the work that you all have done. Couple of things I'd like for you to do for the board, and I don't want to, you know, steal your thunder, but, you know, as far as funding this particular collaboration, can you share that with the board? And also, the board needs to be aware of the timing that's involved in your making application for this program.
Yes, and of course, there's no funding application that's tied to the application. We have to apply and I would think it would probably take us, from the looks of the application, about another three weeks, with your assurance, of course, that you would be a partner in this. It would take us about another three weeks to put that application together. It would take us about another three weeks to put that application together. There's a timeline that the Department of Criminal Justice Service has, I think, maybe the first meeting may be in April, that they take the first look in phase one, and they'll make sure that we've met all the requirements in that particular phase, and then they will approve us to go ahead to the next phase. I believe there are five phases altogether in the, in this program. It will put us in line to apply for many grants that you have to have a program such as this to apply for.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Taylor, thank you for everything that you do for the community, for the county, everything. Appreciate this, you bringing this. When will you need a resolution on this? You tell me. I saw a resolution in the back of the packet.
I would say by the April meeting.
Okay.
If, if that's, if that's doable with you all. I know that's a short timeline.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I mean, it's going to be advantageous in, in receiving grants as well, and, and a lot of things, but I, I like the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Engel, you have a question, sir?
Yes, sir, I do.
You don't?
I do.
Oh, okay, Mr. Bowman. Sorry about that.
The High Sheriff.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
I, I was just curious about this. Now, is this certifying the entire office, or is this certifying an individual?
It's certifying the county. It certifies the county.
The county itself.
As a certified locality of crime prevention.
Okay. So, is there a cost associated with this?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just, just the man I was involved in putting the application together.
Okay. So, I'm looking at some of these check-the-box areas here that, that we have to have, and I'm assuming they're good to go, like the DARE program, the McGruff program, things like that. There's twenty-some of those listed. It says you have to have seven of those. Are we good to go with seven of those?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-some?
Yes.
So, we are good with those?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. So, I don't have a problem with this. I like the way it looks. It's very detailed, and, yeah, I'm on board with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any more comments or questions?
Just very quickly.
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just would like to say to my colleagues, you know, as I shared earlier, and, and this is what I'm sensing from Sheriff Taylor, that time is of the essence. I'd like to see us get this on the agenda for next month, so that we can get the sheriff what he needs, so that he might proceed. And as he's already stated, you know, the, the benefits are galore for the county, and, you know, and our ability to attract, you know, other business and industry into this community, and also for the residents, you know. If you have someone going out, taking a look at, you know, these buildings where people go to work, even, you can start with the county, you know. I, I don't need to tell people about, you know, we've, we have a, the voting precinct, the office here, you know, we've had people to have accidents there and what have you, and a lot of this can be prevented with this type of policing that's involved. So, Sheriff, I commend you for all that you do, and for, you know, that's, that's good looking out.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Engel?
This might be a question for Mr. Hunt, but could, could we not put this on the agenda and, and go ahead and, and vote that it, that a resolution comes out of this, and then, like a check, we'll postdate it? So that it wouldn't slow you down, that you would have it, and not, withstanding the April meeting?
You could make a motion to adopt the resolution in this packet, and then at the next meeting, we'll just ratify your decision, so that'll keep you on track if you need that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm good with that.
Any, any more comments?
I'll, I'll let go the same thing as my colleagues. Great, great program. We appreciate everything you do, Sheriff, and we'll go ahead and get that on there. Make your recommendations tonight, and make everything official next month, then.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks again, Sheriff.
All right. Moving to item seven. Any more discussion from our business? Not hearing any, and we're going to move to item eight for closed session?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear.
Yes, sir.
Under matters from the work session, we're going to have three items, and, and Ms. McClester and I will get together and draft the motion. First one is, you're going to have a discussion or action about the historical buildings, maintenance. The second thing is, there's going to be a motion to reestablish the beautification committee.
Yes.
And the third thing would be to adopt the
Resolution.
Certified Crime Prevention Communities Program Resolution and ratified at your April meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Now, can you read us into closed session, sir?
Sure. Let me bring it up right here. We have one closed session this evening, or this afternoon, and it's the Economic Development Update. It's discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A5. Subject matter: Project Tiger Tail. Purpose: Discussion concerning existing business/industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's/industry's interest in expanding facilities to the community. At this time, Mr. Chairman, a motion, a second, and any discussion is appropriate.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Hunt. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, we ready to vote?
You going to do the roll call, Vaden, or?
No.
It should have popped up. I don't think it's done.
Ain't that popped up?
All right. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
And Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Thank you. It looks like the other one's joined, so...
All right. Good. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.[1041.44]
All right, let's see who we got. Dudley.
All right, I'm on it.
All right. Come on, fellas.
One, two, three.
All right, Mr. Dudley, come on here. Gotta get certified, bro.
Well, thank you.
Oh.
We're missing two. What you got?
All right, where's Mr. Tucker?
I have no idea.
Okay, I got you.
I know you busted my chops, I'm good.
No.
I ain't got but a minute.
All right, we're missing one, should we just two?
Just read this inconspicuously.
Yeah, boy. I'm starting. Do you know where Mr. Tucker and Mr. Bowman are?
I have no idea. One AWOL.
Seven o'clock.
Absolutely.
Seven o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
Virginia.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
With the hunt, we still like two members. We need to certify this so we can start our business meeting.
Yeah. Safety back in the thing. Business meeting time. Mr. Tucker and Mr. Bowman back there.
They were in the back.
We'll have to put an Apple AirTag on them.
You're gonna put a tracking on them.
Oh, here they come.
Mr. Chairman, we return to open session at 7:01. We will now certify the closed session at the work session. Be it resolved at the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors' work session on March 19th, 2024. The board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Freedom of Information Act identified in the motion authorized the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any board member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of his departure, the statement shall be recorded in the board's meeting, board's meeting minutes. I will now do a roll call. Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
The meeting is now certified and it's appropriate to close the work session now, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Work se-